Hello and welcome to another edition of the City Commissioners Report for the city of Pikeville. It's a regular feature now of Pike TV and it's become the regular means by which our citizens in the city receive their information about the actions of our elected officials in the city of Pikeville. Special guest today, a treat for you, State Senator Ray Jones, guest of Barry Chaney, Commissioner. Gentlemen, welcome to the program.
It's always good to be here.
Thank you, Homer. I just want to say, Homer, Ray Jones is probably one of my favorite representatives. I've had the pleasure going to Frankfurt this winter and seeing him work in legislature and Senate. And it's something to behold. He's worked well across the aisles. He was courageous in his speech against gambling. I think he's a fantastic young man and a lot of passion, a lot of care, or a lot of really concerned about the people of Pike County and eastern Kentucky. And I'd kind of like to see him be governor one day.
My goodness gracious, you vetted him well. And Senator, can you live up to all that?
I don't know, but I guess I'm buying lunch today.
Yeah, it sounds good.
He's my buddy and he's done a great job on the commissions.
Gentlemen, let's get to the issue. It's the issue on everyone's mind, and that is the Pikeville Pike County Airport. It's in a state of turmoil as to funding, but that's nothing new. Funding is always a problem and fraught with a lot of personalities and issues. Senator Jones, give us your take on the status of that issue.
Homer, if you go back, you know, I've always been told, when you do what you've always done, you get what you always got. And when I say that, I say it because we have seen a lot of attempts to bring economic development opportunities to eastern Kentucky, and we've seen those fail. One of the biggest impediments that we have to creating new jobs and diversifying our economy in this part of eastern Kentucky is that we're somewhat isolated. We're not close to an interstate highway. If you look at where interstate highways have gone in, go to Morehead, look at the growth there. Go to Richmond, look at Lexington. Interstates bring growth. We don't have an interstate highway. But the other thing that you have to have for economic growth is commercial air service. And if you go back and look statistically, there were over 4,000 large turbine-powered and jet-powered aircraft that came into Pikeville Airport in the last three years. I think it was around 46 or 4800, I'm not sure, but somewhere in that range. A lot of people come in to Pikeville by air, and it has opened up a lot of opportunities. The one thing we don't have is we don't have a commercial air service that makes air transportation more affordable for more people. Now, if you look at the growth with the hospital here in Pikeville, the hospital is an economic engine for not only the city, but for the entire county. There are literally hundreds, if not thousands, of people that live in Pike County and surrounding areas that work at the hospital. Very frequently at the airport, you see jets come in from Cleveland Clinic. And now with the hospital's affiliation with the Cleveland Clinic Heart Institute, it would be a great thing. And one of the sites that they've looked at in terms of a hub that would service the Pikeville Pike County Airport is Cleveland. If you could open up that relationship with Cleveland Clinic and Pikeville Medical Center that is already there and expand that, it would absolutely have a dramatic impact on the hospital and on this region. We see what the hospital's done for the economy here.
Senator, you're telling us that we're 0 for 2 on the main concerns you have about development and growth, and that's highways and the airport.
Well, we have an opportunity, Homer, to bring commercial air service to eastern Kentucky. I can't sit here and tell the folks it would work, but you know, we don't have commercial air service right now. And we have a 3/4 million dollar grant from the federal government that we're going to lose if we can't find the match. Now, some folks say the airport has money of its own it could use to meet the federal match.
And what's your answer to that?
Well, the problem is, Homer, there are, if you look at the money that has gone into the Pikeville Pike County Airport, the new runway, the ILS system, instrument landing system, that airport is the only airport east of Lexington. I don't think London has one, but I'm almost positive it's the only airport east of I-75 and south of I-64 that has an instrument landing system. And that makes it one of the only airports that will be suitable for commercial air service in southeastern Kentucky. Because an instrument landing system will allow commercial aircraft to land under lower visibility conditions, and that's required for commercial air service. It has a 5,300-foot runway. But the money that the airport has, because the FAA has spent so much money on that airport, there are federal limitations on what the airport can do with the money that it has. Now, another problem the airport has is in order to do the commercial air service, they're going to have to put in a full-length taxiway. Because right now, if you taxi out, if you're going to take off on runway nine, you have to actually taxi out onto the runway and taxi back to the west.
That raises safety concerns.
That's a safety concern. So you actually have to go onto the active runway to get to the east runway. So in order to get commercial air service, we have to do the full-length taxiway. That's going to cost a lot of money. We don't know how much money we're going to be able to get from the federal government. Another thing is, the airport right now is not generating enough money. It's typically running a deficit, I think, of about $70,000 or $80,000 a year.
This is not unusual for an airport of that size.
It's not unusual, but if, the more traffic that we can bring into the airport, the more fuel cells, the more general aviation aircraft that we can bring in, the more hangar rental that you're going to generate. And if you could bring commercial air service in there with things like parking, a restaurant, things like that, you would generate enough money to help offset some of those costs, I believe. But the big thing is with the airport, is it helps other businesses in the community. Airports are typically not in the business to make money. They're in the business to open up a region. I mean, if you go to Lexington, look at how much the airport's grown there. And no community that has seen economic growth has seen it without access to commercial air service.
Okay. Senator Jones, you've laid the groundwork for why we should do it. We'll get back to you and ask you in just a moment, and you can be thinking about it, is why aren't we doing it? But let's go right now to Barry Chaney. Barry, you've raised the alarm that we're going to lose businesses, we're going to lose possibly a plant over at the Kemper area. Are these valid concerns?
Well, they are, and the reason I am concerned is right now, at present time, the Pikeville Airport, Pikeville Pike County Airport, has a waiver in order to be able to use that 5,300 feet of airway, or runway space. It's the same type of waiver that Ashland had, which the FAA came in and shortened our runway by 400 feet.
The result being what happened then?
Well, it made certain aircrafts unable to land there. If we lose 400 feet on our runway, the Kellogg's jet that flies in, that corporate flies in sometimes, will not be able to land here. At the present time, it takes all 5,300 feet for that jet to land, and if the runway is wet, it can't land. So you know, it's, my concern is, if that is, if that becomes an inconvenience to Kellogg's and in the climate where so many other areas are competing for economic development, that have an airport that is suitable for that jet to land, will they be able to recruit that business away from us? With our 14 or 15 national brand stores that are going to be located on Thompson's Road, a lot of those stores are going to have corporate executives that are flying in with jets. Are any of those jets going to be the same size as Kellogg's jet? Will they look and say, you know, well, your airport won't accommodate us, we're pulling out, we're going somewhere else? You know, and that's, I think that's a concern. And if you're going to recruit businesses in the future, you know, are you going to go to a corporation, tell them, you know, you have to have a jet this size to get into Pike County? And what are they going to tell you?
Senator Jones, there are some of the problems involved, I'm sure you were aware of them. Why aren't we moving ahead on this project?
Well, let me touch on what Barry said, Homer. The airport, the way it's classified right now, in order to keep the current classification, we have to get commercial air service. If not, we're going to lose maybe more than 400 feet of the existing runway. That's a safety factor for every, not just commercial aircraft, but for general aviation aircraft. Now, I was up there the other day, and Cleveland Clinic's aircraft, their air ambulance, a Citation jet, was there transporting a patient from Pikeville Medical Center directly to Cleveland. If you shorten that runway, as Barry said, it's not just, it's not just the business opportunities that you may lose. What if we can't get a jet like Cleveland's jet into Pikeville? You know, it could happen to any member of my family, your family, Barry's family, anybody watching this show could end up on that aircraft tomorrow due to an illness or injury on the way to Cleveland Clinic.
You mentioned it being a Citation, that is a pure jet, takes a longer rollout and a longer takeoff space.
You have to have a longer runway, the bigger the aircraft, the faster the aircraft, typically the longer the runway. And we don't need to sacrifice the safety that that extra runway distance gives to every pilot and every person that flies in that airport. But while we're not doing it is beyond me. You know, if you look at some of the projects, some that have had severance tax monies wasted in the past, just absolutely wasted, that we really don't have anything to show for it, that we don't have any economic development opportunities to show for it, no jobs have been created, projects that, in my opinion, were not wise investments of taxpayer money. Again, none of us know if commercial air service will work here.
It's a two-year trial period, is it not?
It's a two-year trial period. If it doesn't work, then we're no worse off. If it works, the benefits will be reaped for many years, even after my public service career is over, after Barry's is over. I mean, because once we get commercial air service and get it established, it will, it will help this community grow, not just this community. The interesting thing, Homer, is it's my understanding, the Floyd Fiscal Court has already signed off, and let me tell you the result, what's happened here. In order to get a grant of multi-county money, it takes two counties to apply to the Department of Local Government in order to request that that money be drawn down. Floyd County, is my understanding, is already Floyd, the Floyd Fiscal Court has already approved that resolution.
This is correct.
But we can't get it through the Pike Fiscal Court. Now, in our respect to each and every member of the Fiscal Court, Judge Rutherford, but to me, this is an opportunity that we risk wasting. Now, some of the comments were made to the effect that, well, that's money we could use for water and sewer. Well, that's not true. The multi-county money can only be used for multi-county regional economic development projects, you know, industrial parks, things that are going to bring a regional economic impact. And commercial air service, in my opinion, would give us that opportunity.
Well, one thing I'd like to interject here, too, Homer, that, you know, this is just not a shot in the dark. You know, there's two independent studies that has been done that show that commercial air service will be self-sustaining after two years. The Department of Local Government has conducted their own study, and then the study that the city, the Chamber of Commerce, and, well, the study that we paid for, helped pay for, shows that it'll be self-sustaining after two years.
Elizabetown has commercial air service, and they're 40 minutes from the Louisville International Airport. If they can do it in Elizabetown, 40 minutes from Louisville, standing for field, we're two, we're two hours from the nearest commercial airport. Certainly, we could do it here in eastern Kentucky with the University of Pikeville, with banks like Community Trust, BB&amp;T. We have a large banking and financial center here. We have the largest medical center in eastern Kentucky. It's growing rapidly, that is continuing to grow. We have a large public school system here. We have companies like Kellogg's. We have, we are the heart of the mining industry in Kentucky, a large presence with natural gas. It's not uncommon to see corporate jets, you know, being chartered by EQT, and as Barry said, Kellogg's, they're in here quite frequently. So I mean, you know, and I would encourage people, if you've not been up to the airport, go up and see, go up and look at it. We have a great facility. We appropriated some money to do some more renovations to the terminal.
Located geographically, for those who may be listening for the first time, where is our airport located?
It's off Kelsey Friend Boulevard, on the north end of Pike County, right past Walter's Nissan. Turn right at the traffic light, go up the hill, there's signs that show the airport, and it's, you know, it's basically on the Pike Floyd County line.
Our special guest today for the City Commissioners Report, of course Barry Chaney, we talk to on a regular basis. Senator Ray Jones, represent it well. You're a Senator from Pike Floyd and Johnson Counties?
Pike, Martin, and Johnson.
Martin, I'm sorry. Pike, Martin, and Joy, and Johnson. Gentlemen, you've given us some of the concerns. If we don't get this, why aren't we getting it? I think I asked that just a few minutes ago. Let's go back to that. What's happened?
Well, if, if, when we first started talking about this in the winter, you know, we even talked about it on this show, Homer, and you, and I was pretty excited about it, and if you'd told me that we'd ran into the problems that we've run into with it, you know, I probably would have, wouldn't have believed it. And right now, I'm really shocked.
Bring it forth. Let's hear it.
Well, this is a tremendous economic opportunity, not only for Pike County, but for the region. I mean, you're only, you know, you're, this airport's only, well, it's less than 20 minutes from Prestonsburg. The opportunities that would open up for them would just be unimaginable for us, Knox County. Even Letcher County would prosper from this airport having commercial air service. And it's just, you know, it's just bewildering to me why that can't be, can't get a resolution to support it.
I'm going back in for the third time. Why is it not moving forward?
You know, Homer, Congressman Hal Rogers felt that this was a worthwhile project, and he secured 3/4 of a million dollars. And the, it's my understanding, the city paid for the feasibility study, along with the Chamber of Commerce, is that right?
And the Pike County Airport Board.
And the Pike County Airport Board. And all we're asking is that the Fiscal Court approve a resolution. It's not going to cost the taxpayers of Pike County one red cent, not one penny. We're looking for multi-county coal severance tax money, that if we can't come up with a worthwhile project and join with the Floyd Fiscal Court, then that's money that we're not going to get back here anyway. It's money that, again, it can't be used for water and sewer.
Discretionary funds controlled by the governor.
Discretionary funds controlled by the governor that require two or more counties to jointly petition for, and it again has to be a qualifying economic development project. This project for commercial air service would do that. And I believe from my conversations with people in the Beshear administration that they support this. But they can't look to approve a resolution until the Fiscal Court asks them to do that. Now, I, again, respect the decisions of whatever the Fiscal Court needs, decides to do. That's their choice. But I would just advise the folks out there watching this program, that we risk losing 3/4 of a million dollars of federal money. And if we lose that money, Homer...
You're talking about the original grant funding?
The original grant. If we lose that grant funding, you will never, ever again have an opportunity for commercial air service in southeastern Kentucky. And that, once that opportunity's lost, it will not be able to be undone, in my opinion.
No, that won't do.
Gentlemen, let me encourage you to be a little more specific about why this project is not moving forward.
Well, it's pretty simple. The Fiscal Court won't pass the resolution.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
I mean, and that's their, look...
It's been tabled. It has not been totally rejected.
It's not been, it's not been rejected yet, but every day that goes by, there's, keep in mind, Homer, there's only a certain amount of multi-county money that's available. Other counties in the coalfields in western Kentucky and eastern Kentucky are submitting grants for that money. And the longer we wait, the greater the chance that the money's going to be gone before we ever get a resolution submitted. Now, to me, it's a no-brainer. Congressman Rogers gets 3/4 of a million dollars, the city and Airport Board and the Chamber of Commerce paid for the feasibility study. We have a really good consultant, the same consultant that helped bring commercial air service to Elizabetown, is who is doing this project. The study shows it will work. Now, none of us have a crystal ball. If it works, again, it would be a great thing for the community. If it doesn't work, then we've spent a million and a half dollars of money that otherwise would never have come back to Pike County anyway. So when you hear some of the local folks saying, well, we need it for water and sewer, that money can't be used for water and sewer in Pike County. So we're not taking money away from any other worthwhile project. Again, this is money that can only be used when you have two or more counties that jointly petition for it. Floyd County's already done it. Floyd, the Floyd Fiscal Court has submitted a resolution to try to get this money to help establish commercial air service at the Pikeville Pike County Airport. They didn't do this for Big Sandy, because Big Sandy wouldn't be, Big Sandy Regional would not be able to do the commercial air service most likely.
And that's in Martin County?
Martin County. It's on the Martin, Johnson, Floyd County line, because they don't have an instrument landing system. Now, it's a great facility, and they do a great job over there, but the one thing that Pikeville has, that no other airport has, is an instrument landing system. And the Airport Board has quite a bit of capital improvements that they're going to have to use their money for. And we're just looking to get money that we're not going to get otherwise. And to me, it's a no-brainer.
Have you appeared before the Fiscal Court in Pike County to make any kind of argument for passage of that resolution?
I have not been asked to appear before the Fiscal Court.
Do you need to be asked?
Well, you know, Homer...
Can you not appear from the audience and make the case?
Let me, let me tell you, you know, I was elected State Senator, and I was elected to do that job. I do not believe it is appropriate for me to interject myself. You know, in two years, the folks in Pike County will get to vote on the members, vote for members, people running for the Fiscal Court. And the people who were elected to do that job, it's not my place to supplant my opinion in lieu of theirs. I mean, they know where I stand on this issue. They know that I support the concept of commercial air service. They know that I support using state money that we would otherwise never receive in Pike County for the project. It's not going to hurt any other project or any other person in Pike County or the city of Pikeville. And it's not going to take money away from any other project. To me, that's, that is the one selling point that nobody can refute. Now, if you look at some of the newspaper articles, people say, well, we can use it for this, or we can use it for that. Legally, you can't do that. They would never be able to get that money for the projects that they were talking about. So if they ask me to appear, I'll be happy to appear.
In the absence of the resolution passing, would it be a possibility, you're playing what if here, the governor made the decision to fund it without the approval of Pike Fiscal Court? Or do we run upon the two-county approval problem?
You know, I'm not sure that the governor couldn't do it by executive order, but I don't know if that's ever been done before. At least in my memory, it's not been done.
That would not be a reason for not doing it.
You know, that may be the next step, that we have to go to the administration, see what other, what other options there are to get the revenue to do the match.
Are you hearing anything about any kind of resolution to the problem?
I have not. And Judge Rutherford, you know, in defense of Judge Rutherford, he is, has asked the FAA to clarify whether the money that the Pike County Airport Board has can be used for the match. I don't believe it can, and that's...
First, let me ask you, are you a member of the Pike County Airport Board?
I am not.
All right.
And I've never, I don't go to the Airport Board meetings. Again, I don't, I try not to stick my nose in, if someone needs me to appear at a meeting, whether it's the City Commission, the Fiscal Court, the Airport Board, whoever it may be, if they ask me to appear, address an issue, or to try to provide some type of help or assistance, I'll be there.
You know, one thing, going back to the money, Homer, you know, I've been to several of those meetings up there at the Airport Board. Because, you know, I like to see our city employees, I like to see what kind of jobs they're doing, and they're doing a great job.
Are you a member of the Airport Board?
Oh, no, I'm not. But I do go, I do go from time to time. But that money that Airport Board does have is on deposit, and they take the interest from that money, and they pay their employees up there and work that does have to be done. If, you know, if you start reducing the amount of money that they have, a million dollars taken out, that'll be that much interest money that will not, will not be generated, and somebody's going to have to make up the difference. And the people that have to make up the difference is the Pike County Fiscal Court and the city of Pikeville. So you know, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. If you spend that seed money up there, I mean, you're, you know, somebody's going to have to pay the bills.
The employees of the Airport Board, at one time, it's my understanding, were paid by the Fiscal Court. Now, I believe they get their insurance and benefit package through the Fiscal Court, but the Airport Board reimburses the Fiscal Court for the cost of those employees. So, you know, Barry's right, you know, the more that money that they draw down right now, the less interest it's going to draw, and the more, you know, the quicker that money's going to run out. Because they are going to have to spend several million dollars, most likely, that money on infrastructure improvements in the facility. And that may have to be done with regard to, or with, with whether or not we even get commercial air service.
Even in this discussion, are you removing from the equation the Airport Board's $6 million?
I don't think legally, without FAA permission, that you can spend that money.
Well, with, you know, I'll explain about the Marion's Branch property here that the city bought. You know, we, we and the Airport Board really wanted to give that to the city for economic development and middle-income housing, but the FAA prevented them. There had to be an appraiser that was FAA-approved. I think we finally got one out of Cincinnati, I think, to come in and do an appraisal, and it then cost us $1.4 million to buy that property. But, you know, it could not be gifted back or back to county or city, and...
The follow-up was that was the move to the campaign location of the airport.
Well, this was, you know, with, with the property that the city had up at Marion's Branch, the, or the, that the Airport Board had, that they, that they wanted to get, you know, to sell or convey to the city for economic development, for the, for the development that's being done at Marion's Branch. The FAA would not allow the Pike County Airport Board to sell that. They rejected the first appraisal, didn't they, Barry?
Right, they did.
Because the appraiser was not FAA-certified. And the reason they do that, Homer, is because the FAA has spent so much money at the Pikeville Pike County Airport, they don't want to see the Airport Board revenues depleted or wasted. Because, you know, at some point, the FAA may not be in a position to put any additional money into the airport. And they need that money to run the airport. Like I said, it's $70,000 or $80,000 in deficit.
And then, too, you know, you've got, that law was put into effect to keep local governments from cannibalizing the airports. Because, you know, if you have budget shortfalls and you're looking for money, whoever's got money, you're going to go after it if you can.
We've got a couple of minutes left. When you raise the question about a problem, most people expect you to have an answer of some sort as to a solution. I'll ask each one of you. Where do we go from here?
Well, we're not done with this yet. I think that, you know, I'm hoping that, that Fiscal Court will go ahead and do this resolution. And, you know, that's my hope.
It could very well be that a resolution is reached before this airs on its regular basis on Pike TV. So I mentioned that in times of, in terms of when this airs, even as people watch it, it may have been resolved sometime before they see this program. Senator Jones, what do you think should be done?
I think the Fiscal Court needs to immediately approve a resolution requesting that the multi-county money be allocated for commercial air service, and that they join with, with the Floyd Fiscal Court in supporting this concept.
When does the Fiscal Court meet again?
I'm not sure.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Gentlemen, believe it or not, time has gone. That's the fastest 30 minutes I've ever lived. And I thank you so much for your insight into it and your courage to step up and speak about the problem.
Let's hope we get a resolution.
We need one.
Good to see both of you. This has been the City Commissioners Report for the city of Pikeville, for Pike TV. I'm Homer Owens. Good day. Good day.